Norrie, would you lead us in?
Let us pray. Father, we ask that you would be with us tonight. We thank you for all our blessings, Lord, that you've bestowed on us and hope that we can make it into another year and with wisdom and knowledge that you would let us do things for the county. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as far as establishment of quorums, it looks like we have eight of eight this evening. Thank you all for your attendance. We will at this time consider a vote for the 2025 seating of the chairman. Are there any nominations from the floor? Yes, sir. Commissioner Kapacinski.
Chairman Johnny, I'd like to nominate John Bigford for chairman.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We do have a motion from Commissioner Kapacinski and a second from Commissioner Norrie. Is there any discussion? Call for a vote. Yeah.
Automated or?
Automated.
Oh, all right. All right, now, now we can go.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. I'd like to thank commissioners for their vote of confidence. Hopefully, I will not let you down. Now, with that, do I have a motion? We needed seat the vice chair. Do I have a motion or at least names?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to seat.
Okay, I have a motion. Do you have a second on?
A second.
Okay, have motion and a second. Therefore, we'll.
No discussion?
Just hold on just one moment. We're having just a sec. I have a problem with the voting system. I apologize.
No problem.
Not ready yet. We don't have the motion or second. Wait a minute, he ain't got that yet.
So I apologize. We're going to go back to the old fashioned way. I believe Commissioner Kapacinski made, made the motion?
Yes.
And I apologize. May I get the who made the second? Commissioner Backrak. At this time, we'll have a call for a vote. Commissioner Kapacinski?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Norrie?
Aye.
Bigford?
Stain.
Gooden?
Aye.
Backrak?
Aye.
And Allen. Thank you. So we have seven with a vote of yes and one abstaining.
No searing allowed.
Ad drafted.
No searing allowed.
All right, that brings us now to approval of the 2025 bylaws, rules of procedure, code of conduct and code of ethics. Nikki, would you like a separate vote on those or just combine them all?
You can combine them all. These, your bylaws, the code of ethics and the code of conduct all include the changes that were made in the year of 2024 up through April. So I would hope you, and if adopted, they'll have the 2025 adoption date on them. But yes, you can make a motion to all of them at the same time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Correction to the code of ethics as it's written there.
Okay. That would be.
We are not in Matthews County.
I had a one on page twelve.
Yeah, we're in Buckingham County.
Oh, okay.
I missed it again. Second year. Okay, well, I'll get it right this time. It's correct in the, in the description of the recognition of who's been appointed. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, was it duly noted? Pete, you had something, sir?
Do I do this by hand or what? Can we make a motion to accept?
At this time, yes. If you have a.
Make a motion that we accept them as, as corrected.
Okay. I have a motion to accept as presented. Do I have a second?
As corrected, sir.
I'm sorry?
As corrected.
With the correction, yes. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Yes, please. We're having a system issue.
Leave that to you now, sir. Okay. All right. All right, that brings us to the approval of agenda. Nikki, is any changes in the agenda?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion approved as presented?
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Got it, Nikki? Okay. We have approval of minutes. They are for the December sixteenth, 2024. Now, they do, Joyce has provided the page with the mistakes in it. So if we approve it, it will be.
With these corrections. And I'd like to apologize to the board, too, because before, when I've given the sheet some corrections that I had written out, I only gave copies to Nikki and I think maybe to you, Chairman. And that was, I don't know, a little presumptuous or something that you would just accept what I said and nobody else needed to see it. So what I did was made sure that everybody had a copy. And again, and some of you have it in red where the arrows are. And again, my printer went crazy, but some copies just have black. So if somebody, it's all black. So if somebody really wants a red copy, I've got one here that they can have because I have it at home on my computer. But there were a bunch of things. And there were things like on the, in the minutes that were. And I'm trying to say just not picking up the language from the voice to print and, and just like it says, good and instead of Gooden. And some capitalizations and things like that. And so, and I just, the computer not being familiar with the name Kush and called it a Chris. My sister's name is S E A Y and they just had the capital letter C kind of thing there. So I just wanted to print out so everybody could see what I saw. I don't know if there are any other corrections. But most importantly, at the bottom, the voting record says that I voted for case twenty-four, SUP three fifty-two, and I did not.
Correct.
I abstained, and that's said in the minutes, but it still shows up. And I think this written copy, written thing is our official minutes. So.
Okay. Before we vote, is it any other corrections commissioners have seen? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections that Joyce has given us?
Oh, moved.
Do I have a second? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, very good. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Nikki, you got this?
Yes, sir.
Abstain, I won't hear.
Oh, it's okay.
Do you need to know? I had to abstain because I wasn't at the meeting, so I just.
You abstained from the minutes? I'm sorry, yes, sir, I'll. I have that noted, yes.
Thank you. That brings us to public comment. Do we have, I see no public, so I'm assuming we have none. Okay. I will close that and move forward to old business, which we have nothing to there, and new business also. So that moves us to the Commonwealth Regional Council. Now, do we need to close out the, this planning meeting because we're actually starting a work session?
No, actually, what I did, we did not have a work session last week. What we did, what I did this week was, since that was the only thing left, and from the December meeting slash work session, the consensus was at that time that the draft looked as if it was ready to move forward to the Board of Supervisors. The board has their copy as of January. And what you all, as the Planning Commission did, was to task Tyler with just a few small changes, all of which looks like he's been able to take care of. The draft sections are all numbered appropriately. I'm sure he has much more detail to do. But this, having the comp plan on the official regularly scheduled meeting will allow you to make the formal motion to move it to the board. And then we'll, I'll introduce that to them at their February meeting, asking for that joint public hearing.
Okay, very good, Nikki. With that, Tyler, she'd come to the podium and I'll turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Thank you. All right, so the purpose today is just to go through the entire plan. If, any feedback that you all might have on any section of the plan. So I don't really plan to go over each section since we've all spent, you know, time going through each section judiciously, I'd say. And so just going to kind of leave it up to you all. If you have any feedback, we can go there. And then also just have a list here of things that I have left to do just to let you all know, to add to make it a more finalized copy. Just leaving it up to if anyone has any comments or feedback, anything they caught that might need to be, get corrected or changed for the final version.
Do any commissioners have anything that they caught is a change that may be a revision? We'll move us forward to the Board of Supervisors when they'll be introduced in February. And right at the moment, we're not sure. We were, had talked in December in regards to having a joint meeting. Danny, in your opinion, would we have it if we did this? Would you be, have it on, in March at your meeting or have it on twenty, I think, what is it, March? Twenty-fourth of March at our meeting, which if we had it at ours, it would give you, the Board of Supervisors a little bit more time to study and look at it.
Well, you know, we got to, the book this last.
You've already seen some of it already.
Yeah, I mean, we might be slow looking at it, but yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We got it to look at. So February would be a good time to say we will have a public hearing.
Well, what we'll do is, if this moves forward to the board, then in February, as a board, y'all decide whether you want to have it in March, a public hearing jointly with, or either at our meeting, the twenty-four.
Okay.
Okay. Has any of the commissioners seen anything they feel like need to be addressed?
This is a whole lot of stuff to look at that I hadn't seen all of it. But I guess if he knows everything and looks good to him, that means a lot.
Yeah, I mean, I think we spent a good amount of time going through each section and getting feedback and working on it. So I think we have it in a really good place right now. I do have a, just a list of kind of tasks to check off to, you know, make it a more finalized version. So we'll add an acknowledgement section that'll go right behind the cover page. Then we'll have a table of contents, index of tables, index of charts, index of maps, just to help keep everything organized. We'll have a copy of the citizen survey report attached at the end as an appendix, as well as the community meeting summary. And then one question I did have was in terms of like a little cover page for each section. In the last plan, there was a little cover page for each section that had a picture that went along with that section a little bit. I don't have access to any new photos. We could use the old photos or we could. Okay. So I'll, I'll reach out to you and then maybe you can send me some of the pictures and we can figure out how it works because I think that would add to the, you know, aesthetic value of it. Kind of, you know, get consistent header and footer formatting, make sure the page numbering is continuous across the whole document. And then another question I had was in terms of once the, we decide for the public hearing, which, how many copies of the plan do we need to print and what are the locations we need to have them set at? Because I believe it needs to be available for the public to view in between that time when the advertisement for the public hearing comes out to when the public hearing actually occurs. That'd be the library and maybe this building and then the one town hall or?
Well, what are you saying, Nikki?
I know that we'd be open to putting it in as many places as possible. I definitely don't think that. Do you need an answer tonight for the?
No, no, no. These are just kind of some of the last, you know, little details to figure out to get the plan to, to all the way to its finish. But that's, that's pretty much all that's left to do from here. So just some minor things to clean it up and make it look a little better, but.
Will you have those ready for the board in February when it's introduced to them?
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can have it ready by then.
Yes, thanks. Go ahead, Joyce.
Yeah, as long as, I mean, I can send it. When would you need it by? Before February tenth or on February tenth?
They would receive the pack.
Like February third? Yeah, probably not by then. But, I mean, I was thinking that they could at least review just this, because this is the content of the comprehensive plan. The rest is just.
They'll, they'll have the email version because they have the, their notebook set up with, you know, that file. Any copies?
Okay.
Very good. Joyce, go ahead.
I just want to clarify, Nikki, when you said administrative, and then I'm thinking public offices like the health department, social services and extension office also. Are we, are you talking the same thing?
I was just talking about the administration building, but I'll take any of the suggestions to put it in the best places possible.
But I'm thinking public offices where there's material out like social services, the health department and the extension office at least. And I don't know where else there's public information.
I guess it's, it's up to the commission if they want to go out into the private sector and have them in stores or whatever.
I really wasn't thinking about so much historic stores, but I was just, when she said administrative, I didn't know if she meant just here or we're talking, if we're making it available to the public. Put it in some of those places that they go to. I wasn't even thinking about post office because.
Yeah. Well, it's a, it's something we can think on and make a recommendation to Nikki. If you want to go to private versus, you know, the public. You're going to, this will be introduced to the Board of Supervisors in February. So if you've got time, it's not going to be a public hearing until at the earliest March anyway.
Okay. And we can think about it.
Yes.
Because I was just, again, not everywhere, social services, health department, those kinds of places.
How do you pick, you got that? We'll probably name some places to put it other than the administration office.
Yep. And those sound like pretty much the same places we were at, using to advertise for the citizen survey and things like that. So admin building, social services, health department, library, administration building.
Bigford and members of the commission, how would you feel about doing something that we did for the citizen surveys? And that was putting on the county website, county Facebook page just to QR code. They could, I mean, that opens it up to.
I think that would be a good idea. I mean, you get the exposure. Did we also run it on the, at the library? I can't recall whether, we did two there also, didn't we?
We can do that again.
I think that probably was. That way you're getting as much exposure as possible. Any commissioners see anything that they feel like they need to adjust? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve as presented and moving forward to the Board of Supervisors?
Oh, move.
A second.
The, the system is ready.
You push your buttons again?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. All right, there you go. All right. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll take our vote. That went unanimously. So I appreciate all the help work, sir. Nikki, that brings us to your reports.
I don't have anything additional for you all this evening.
Okay. All right, that brings us to commission matters and concern. There is one thing that I know, and I will turn this over to Pete because he's more on, y'all have seen what we, what we're talking about doing is that bill that actually takes the authority away from the county level on specifically solar farms that they're planning on, or at least this bill would create a commission that had financial powers as well as pretty outstanding powers to override the local boards of the county. So what I'm gonna let Pete, Pete, you, why don't you give a quick overview and then we'll talk about this.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been following some of this legislation. There are a number of bills this year that came out of both the House as well as the Senate that will be crossing over that virtually become sort of backdoor eminent domain issues. First and foremost, the bills that were coming out of the, the House of Delegates as well as the Senate have to do primarily with solar farms to the extent that if, if a county decides that, that a project should not go forward, if according to these bills, basically there's a state commission being developed that can be appealed to by anyone essentially, basically the contractor. And that board would have the ability to override any decision made by the county. At the same time, if that did occur, of course, anything financially beneficial to a county would also be taken away. So there are some significantly negative consequences behind having such a commission. And those bills are, are about to cross over. My guess is they came out of committee. They'll probably be approved. I was given some indication that anything that has to do with taking land use decisions away from the county will probably be vetoed by this administration. However, what you need to know is that this is the second time these bills came up. They came up last year as well. They were vetoed last year. This year, they'll probably be vetoed again. They will probably come up again next year. If there's a change in the administration, there will be, but depending on who's in there and you don't know who that's going to be, you don't know how they're going to view these things, those bills could conceivably pass, in which case we have an eminent domain situation facing the counties. Now, that situation has come up before and the, and the state, the state turned it away. So this is sort of a backdoor way of having state government sort of rule over local government when it comes to land use decisions. And by the way, these bills that are in the legislature right now do not just. And by the way, uh, these bills that are in the legislature right now do not just deal with solar. There are, there are other bills that basically can dictate what and how, uh, what is included and how a comprehensive plan can be written by the Planning Commission approved by the board that could include things like energy, uh, housing, and, and that sort of thing. So this doesn't just stop with solar. This is a slippery slope, all right? There are some counties in the state who've recognized this, and they've begun writing resolutions. Uh, those resolutions are going to state legislators, uh, they're written by the boards. Uh, they're going to the state legislators indicating strongly that they want to maintain the right to make land use decisions in the county. I couldn't agree more. I mean, some of these people that are making decisions or want to make decisions for Buckingham probably don't even know how to spell Buckingham, and quite frankly, don't even know where we are. So those local land decisions belong, really belong here. So my, my view is, and I, and again, I'd, I'd like to turn this over to the Commissions for their discuss, commissioners for their discussion. I would, uh, I would recommend, or I would like to have the, uh, Commission consider recommending that we write a letter, a uniform letter, to the board, suggesting or recommending that they write their own resolution to our state legislators, indicating, uh, a desire for Buckingham to maintain land use decisions in the county. So, Mr. Chairman, that's basically the overview. I would like to turn it over to you and, and the other commissioners for discussion.
Okay, so I will open it up to the commissioners as, uh, to voice their opinions on this, whether they feel strongly enough to say, look, we would like to make, uh, pass, and this is just was used as a resource example, to the Board of Supervisors to ask them to, uh, voice their proposal to, to this bill. So now I'm open up to the commissioners if you feel comfortable doing that. Don't everybody talk the same time now?
I, I think it's a good idea. I looked over the Washington County document, and I think it's a.
Okay. And.
I also think it's a good idea that we protect our county, and we look at for our business here, so I, I would support that.
Okay. Of the consensus, it sounds like, of the planning commission? Okay. Can we, Pete, would you put that in a motion that we, uh?
Yes, sir. Um, I would make a motion that, uh, the Commission, uh, provide a written recommendation to our County Board of Supervisors to have them consider writing a resolution to our state legislators, informing them of our desire to maintain land use decisions in the county, with the county.
All right. Pete has made a motion. Do I have a second? Like, have a second?
Didn't mean to write that up so we can push a button.
Okay.
Wait a minute, he ain't, he ain't made it yet.
Do I need to say it again?
You just, just watch. He's gonna write it up, and it's gonna be written first. Right now, it's, I don't know.
Got a motion?
Hang, you make a motion.
To their opposition? Oh, uh, resolution regarding their opposition. Well, there's also a House bill. Yeah, I think it ought to reflect all bills from the Senate and the House of Delegates. So write a letter to the Board of Supervisor recommending, recommend consideration, write a letter, opposing. Opposing any legislation that would take away county's right to make land use decisions on.
Well, I'll tell you, while Jamie's getting that correct, I'd like to, uh, welcome Danny back to the Commission. And I look forward to working with you, Danny, and I'll give you the floor to, if you'd like to speak or whatever.
Thank you for being back. I'm glad to be over here. Hope everything goes good. Hey, now, we'll tell you this, though, that paper that you just had.
Yeah.
I sent that to, um, call card or an E M. about putting it on our board, so.
Yeah, I gave, I, I emailed it to Nikki, too, after Pete forwarded it to me. So it's just a resource, you, you know, if y'all decide to follow up on and, and do a.
Do, do we want to put in one ourselves and send it to the board and add our names on to it?
Well, I mean, I think what we can do, uh, well, it's two things we could do. We can wait till we get the draft of what we want from the Commission or just let it go to, to you all and make your decisions and y'all change it. It, you have the authority versus the planning commission, so it probably makes sense for y'all just to adjust it however you feel. While we're doing that, too, any other commissioners have anything they'd like to voice?
I've got a couple of things.
Oh, go ahead, Steve.
Uh, what's the next plan for the Board of Supervisor, the Planning Commission, to, uh, have the committee meet for the industrial park? That, you know, for the rest of the acreage, will, will this committee be meeting again that met before? Or I just wonder if there's any plans in the future to have that rezoned or what, what we're going to do with that.
Be a public hearing held. Um, the Board of Supervisors chose to hold that for the seven point four one three acres for the sale to the Christian School. But they did not indicate, um, all of the information that, um, was decided, your recommendation from the Planning Commission directly to the board was given to them at the January meeting, but there was, um, no discussion at that time, um, the night of the January Board of Supervisors meeting to move forward with the committee or any other consideration. I'm sure they're taking your recommendation under consideration and something from them at the, at the, you know.
Okay, I just didn't know.
They did not form.
But I didn't think they would drop it, but I didn't want, I just wondered what the next step would be, if they wanted the committee to meet again, so.
And I have not been contacted since the meeting in regards. I'm sure they've taken the recommendation under consideration.
And the only other thing I have, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, but have you heard any more about the rehab center down on Route twenty?
I have not.
I just wanted to bring it up again. I didn't, you know, that it wouldn't be dropped, I'm sure.
No, it's not dropped. I have not heard anything else.
Thanks, Steve. Any other commissioners have anything to just try? If not, uh, Pete, are you ready to make your motion again? Vote for your motion?
Little bit of stuff in there. Hold on, okay. Take away any local zoning from.
From the locality.
Should that end right there?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, can you end it right there? And then that, that'd be a good motion, as far as I'm concerned.
I would add one thing, Jamie. Locals, uh, would undermine or take away any local zoning decisions. And that would sort of clean it up. Thank you. All right, uh, we have a motion. Pete, go ahead and, and do we have a second? I think you did. Okay, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll vote. Hey, that passes unanimously. All right, if there is no other commissioners have anything to voice at this time, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Before you do, Mr. Chairman, I got a question with regard to this, uh, work schedule. Uh, does that presume that there's going to be more comprehensive plan, or is that just any kind of a work session?
Those work sessions are for anything. We, if, once we move this back, if the board doesn't move the comprehensive plan back to us, we don't have any. If we have, and I put in there that all of the work sessions are tentative, they're on the schedule in case there is something. But if we, just like last week, we didn't have anything, so we didn't move forward with a work session, so.
So these are just making a, a date available?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
No problem. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Don't move. All right, I don't assume there's any discussion, so we will vote.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. There we go. All right, let's see the answers. We are adjourned. It's like they were one.